YouTube. When you do your votes, if you, you know, if somebody raises their hand, you want to acknowledge that just for for time purposes, I think you're okay, because
Okay.
There are, there are records of these meetings available.
Going in and out, but I assume you guys are still there.
Yeah, well, you're cutting in and out, but we've got you right.
Okay. Okay, approval of voucher. So the voucher came in the email. Yesterday, I think, did, um, I don't, I haven't signed it yet, but did you guys all get that? Um, I'm gonna assume you did, so we don't have to unmute everybody. We'll just have to make sure to go in and and sign that today. Does anybody have questions about the voucher or want to discuss it?
I haven't seen it. I apologize. I haven't seen it.
Darlene, if you have any problems accessing, just give us a call.
Okay.
And your, your, your information is still the same, right? Your,
It is. It may be in that email, but I haven't checked my email, so.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
That sun's there.
So no other questions about the voucher? Let's move on to the, did you have a question, Darlene?
No, I don't think so. I've seen it, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's my fault. I haven't checked my email.
Well, it looked pretty basic, like standard stuff to me. Um, okay, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from December 4th. And those are attached to the agenda. Um, did anybody, did you guys have a chance to review those?
Yes, and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Darlene makes a motion to approve the minutes from December 4th. A second. Um, all right, all in favor of the minutes as written?
Aye.
Aye. I can't really see you guys. Did you guys vote aye?
Yes.
You know, you did.
Yes.
Hands, Amy.
Okay, all right, good. All right, and so the next item is public comment. Um,
Amy, can I?
We did receive one. Go ahead. Yeah, if you want to speak to this.
Well, I was just gonna let the board know, uh, we've been working hard. Josh, our technology coordinator, has been working really hard, and I'm pleased to announce that very soon, by our next meeting, we will have the capability to let the public in to these meetings. So that they can deliver public comment in person if they'd like. They can still do it in writing, but they'll be able to deliver it in person. And the way it'll work briefly is they'll, they'll, we'll have them. They'll be in a waiting room. In essence, what we're not going to do is have the same link for the general public as the board and the administration. But they'll be able live time to deliver comments. They'll still be able to observe the meeting, and they'll be in a waiting room and led in by the, the host, so. Um, we plan to get that up and running with our boards very soon, within the week, and then I can walk you through that, so. Um, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we were working on that, and that's coming soon. Um, and I'll, I'll defer to you on the other piece, Amy, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, well, we did receive a public comment, and it's, it's linked to the agenda. I mean, um.
We typically haven't. We typically haven't read them into the record unless, you know, the board or a member of probably, it's, it's really up to the board chair, but I think just to give an overview, it is linked to the agenda and the, um, uh, there was concern by the individual about the shift to remote learning and, uh.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I, it is, it is a difficult time. It is a difficult um, thing for everybody. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, given the, um, circumstances, we're doing the best that we can, and I know, you know, going back to, I mean, Mark's really, he's taking these decisions very seriously. And shifting back to in-person learning is where we would like to go, um, but we need to proceed safely, so. Um, you know, I appreciate getting feedback from the community, um, and we're just gonna keep that in mind and do the best we can.
Amy, if I could just take a second too, and
Go ahead.
Not necessarily a response, but just so the general public knows, um, these decisions I've made, they're very difficult. I appreciate you acknowledging it's tough for all, but I, I want folks to know I'm not doing it in a vacuum. That, um, with any of the decisions like this, remote or, um, anything connected to the pandemic, I'm working very closely on a daily basis with my administrative team. I work with representatives from the MDI Hospital, the Jackson Laboratory, the Down East COVID-19 Task Force, the Hancock County Superintendents, and certainly all the board chairs from the AOS. And in this most recent decision and all the decisions I've made connected to the pandemic, that's how I've operated. Um, I don't want to at all suggest that I'm not responsible. I'll take complete responsibility for all the decisions. But the lens that I'm operating on is making sure that, um, I'm checking in with people to include our nurses and and a variety of folks, so I'm listening. I appreciate the feedback. I know it's very difficult for families. I know it's very difficult for students. I know it's very difficult for teachers and staff, and I'm very conscious of that, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we work through this pandemic. But the sole goal that I have, and it looks different for everybody, is to keep our, our kids, our staff, our schools, and our communities safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, so moving on, the next, um, thing is reports and updates, and the principal's report is first, so we'll hand it over to Haley.
Hey, um, does everybody have a copy, or should I share my screen?
I don't have it.
All right, maybe Josh.
If you can share it, Haley, it'd probably be best.
I thought that'd be easier. Josh is gonna enable me, I think, in a second. Josh, I think you may carry our co-host instead of me.
Oh, did I get the wrong one? Sorry. I think it moved on me.
There, I got it.
Be off that. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Can everybody see that now? Um, so, our enrollment has not changed, and we do have some staffing updates. One of these, um, the guidance offer was in like the third update, so I'll just cover that now. Um, we did make an offer, um, for a PE teacher, a one-year position. Um, Cameron Frothingham is, um, living on Great Cranberry with his family, and he has accepted a one-year position uh, so that we have a teacher on Great Cranberry, and we have Caitlin Damon on Islesford. They're doing, um, PE and health for the school, so we took that five-hour budgeted position and split it in half so that we could, um, have PE every week instead of every other week, um, and not have to do virtual other than when we're in remote learning. Um, so that was great. Another, get another example of just community members and people just stepping up to make this year work for everyone. It's been absolutely phenomenal. Um, how much support we've gotten this year, just from everyone across the board. So, we're excited about that. First week was this week, of course. So, we, um, yeah, hopefully we get back in person, and he has a lot of experience in like outdoor learning and adventures and stuff like that, so that should be a great program over there. Um, we did make an offer for a guidance counselor as a contracted services offer, so it doesn't come forward as, um, like the teacher contract like it does the board. It's handled administratively, um, but that offer is still pending. The person hasn't accepted yet, so we're really hoping that she does, and I will update you as soon as, uh, I have a response, a for final response from her.
Amy, if I, if, if I may, just to clarify too, um, because I want the board to know, this is not, uh, at all to circumvent the board's approval of nominations. Uh, this is a contracted service, so that's, that's, that's the way, uh. This is a little different than if we would be nominating a principal or a teacher. The board still has final approval on, on all of those, uh, permanent positions.
This is how our other guidance counselors have been hired as well. Um, and so what's happening at the school? As we know, we're in remote learning. Um, this time is different than the spring. Students are participating in full school days. They are receiving live instruction in all subject areas. Um, and from what I hear, you know, other than the obvious challenges, like in general, things are going pretty well. People are getting access to materials and there's Zoom links and the schedules, and we're kind of getting into a routine. Um, and we've had a lot of professional development this year targeted around the needs of this year, so in December, we were able to receive professional development from a literacy coach that's worked with us before, and these sessions were focused on, uh, specifically kindergarten literacy development and kindergarten remote learning, so that was, um, done just in time. Uh, so the teachers got some really great resources, ideas, um, lesson plans, activities to target our kindergarten pod, so to speak. Um, and then this month, they started another round of math coaching with Becky Tapley from the Maine Science and Math Alliance. She did coaching with us in the fall around remote learning and resources there, and now she's doing, um, individual coaching with the teachers um, to work on their personal professional goals. And TLC is still going virtually. They have the next, uh, round of book groups has started. They have optional, um, exercise, group activities, their holiday parties, so they're still doing as much as they can, uh, remotely and virtually this year. Um, we also received a heart-centered learning stipend from the Childhood Trauma Learning Collaborative for $500 to implement a program to promote student and/or staff wellness. So I'm still kind of working out the details of that program, but you should see something in the newsletter soon about how, um, how that will work. So that was kind of an exciting little boost to our ongoing wellness programming efforts. And, uh, semester one ends this month, and we'll be working on report cards soon. And then the only building update I have is that we've scheduled the main fire protection inspections, the sprinkler system for June. We tried to get them out earlier, but they, um, they aren't able to come out to the islands until June, and they have some other, uh, places set up that they're already visiting. So that's my only building update, and then I have a link to our January calendar. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Amy, the only thing, if I can add to Haley's report, is I'll be working with Haley on identifying somebody that can come out and give an assessment short-term, mid-term, long-term on these two schools, just a, you know, an overview of, of, of systems, structures, things that we might need to be taking, uh, paying attention to that we might miss. Um, so hopefully, I think along with what Haley said, we'll look to accomplish that in the spring as the weather warms, and um, hopefully, we have a better handle on this pandemic to open that up. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, my, I guess Haley, I'm really glad to see that you've got the fire protection inspection scheduled. Now, does that cover like all of the, uh, codes, making sure that we're up to code on the entire building, or is that just for the sprinklers?
That's just the sprinkler systems, and we had Northeast Plumbing inspect the heating systems this fall. Um, but, yeah, I don't, um, I think that maybe the person, Mark.
It's just fire, Amy. It's fire protection, uh, on, so I think the piece you're referencing would be fall more in line with a general, um, a general contractor type of overview of there.
Yeah. But, but when they did the, um, the whole building project, they had the code enforcement officer inspect things before they reopened, so I guess this fire thing should, should make us okay as far as fire protection, and the, and the lift has already been inspected and approved, so I guess it'll be good.
And the reality is, Amy, if it comes to pass that this, uh, happens, is that, um, all of our schools, uh, and, and in particular, our, our Island Schools, we really need that resource. You know, Haley does a great job staying on top of things, but it's really not in her wheelhouse to understand boilers and electrical systems, and so this operational piece, I think, is, is critical to all of our schools, and it's really going to allow our principals to be the educational leaders and focus on the teaching and learning, um, where I think we want them to prioritize. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Does anybody else have questions? Go ahead.
Um, I'm trying to remember all of them. I've had, okay, so, um, there's only two, but, um, one of them was just to clarify. Um, let me shut this door. We've got four Zoom classes going on right now, and I cannot find a quiet spot in my house. So anyway, um, so I wanted to clarify that we, um, um, we don't, uh, have to vote on the part-time contractual teachers. Is that what I understood? It's like the PE and guidance counselor and things like that. We don't vote, correct?
May I respond, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah, Darlene, that is correct. Um, we, we, and again, it's not at all to circumvent the board. I mean, this is why we bring it forward, to make sure you're comfortable, but if at any time, because they're contracted services, there's an opportunity to, for, for either party to, to back out of that agreement. Um, but, uh, yeah, with a traditional teacher nomination, full-time, uh, or certainly principal, those are the positions we would, we would be bringing forward for board, um, nominations and approval, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. No, I'm, I'm, um, very pleased with the ones that have been hired. That's, that's awesome. I just wanted to make certain I understood it. And then the second thing is, um, I'm gonna go find another spot now. The second thing is, um, so kindergartners, though, are still half-day, correct? I know you said students are full-time now, but kindergartners are still half-day, correct, Haley?
Um, kindergartners are half-day, although we are, um, we did bump specials and science into the afternoon, um, and are offering those to kindergartners, so I, that's kind of parent discretion. Um, those links are available and on their schedules. Um, so that would be up to parents, you know, how much, if that works for them.
Okay, all right, and we can talk, uh, uh, okay, so, so science is still Zoom?
Yeah.
When it's back in the classroom?
Um, no, when it's back in the classroom, it'll go back to Fridays. This was just to kind of consolidate our efforts.
Okay, so, okay, all right. So kindergartners are half-day plus specials, and then the rest of the students are full-time. And did you say we lost one person in our enrollment?
No, last month, um, I think I let the board know that we had a student switch over to the virtual academy, but we still have all, like, our full enrollment that we had this fall, yeah.
I'm sorry, there was just so many people, me and me, that I was hearing bits and pieces. I needed to clarify those three things that I wanted to make certain I heard them correctly. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the principal report? Okay, so should we take down the shared screen? There we go.
Yeah, and I have another screen to share if we're moving on to high school.
Yes, high school transition is the next, I, next.
Can I just ask a quick question? Um, I'm just conscious of when I concede some folks having, uh, internet, uh, challenges or shifts, me included, please, um, any parents or anybody out there, um, I know Haley and Josh are working hard to make sure that our students and staff have, you know, access, so if there's any issues out there, please let us know, um, so we can try to work on those and, and
Okay.
Make sure people have what they need. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, Haley?
Okay, so this is a document. I think I might have originally shared it, um, in November, but I don't know if we went over it in a meeting. So this is a draft fact sheet that I've made. I took the questions from this summer that were presented to me, and I met with Nancy and a couple other people to, to get the answers to them. Um, so this is just a draft again, but it kind of explains what school choice is, how much we cover for boarding. If a parent chooses to send their student to a boarding school, it clarifies kind of our current, uh, boat transportation, although I know that's always something that we're working on cleaning up and clarifying, so there might be some comments, uh, or suggestions that can be made there, especially, um, bus transportation. Again, just kind of took what I know so far, um, how things have been, again, open to, um, you know, making sure this is all correct, and then who to contact with questions. Um, just kind of, again, explaining that role of me or the K-8 principal in the budgeting part of it, and then the high school principal for the overall high school programming. So, um, I have this, and then Mark and I also discussed recently, um, having a informational session each spring for families. Um, I know Mark Kerrigan has done, does, uh, works with the kids that are enrolling in MDI High School, and, um, Douglas Cornman usually does something for the middle schoolers, just like a general getting ready to think about moving on to high school thing every year. Um, but we talked about having something just more specifically for like all the, you know, eighth grade parents or seventh, eighth grade parents, and having some people who can answer more of the nitty-gritty questions, um, that they might have about, you know, next steps, um, especially those who are not planning on enrolling at MDI High School. So we were gonna schedule our first one of those this spring, and, um, yeah, so that's kind of where I am with all that, and definitely open to any suggestions or other things you'd like me to investigate or work on.
Amy, if I could add one thing to that, we've talked, uh, about, um, you know, whether it be a manual or resource, I think certainly having, uh, um, every year being able to update, but having the go-to people for the questions to be, um, answered as they come in, not to, to take away from any group-type meetings, but, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, Haley and Crystal DeGrasso, that Swan's teaching principal, maybe getting together and, and seeing how we can, um, align some of the, some of the questions that we get frequently from all of our Outer Island Schools, including French Borough and, and Swans, and, and put that together, so, um, I will talk to Michelle Gertler as well about, uh, that piece, and Michelle's the, uh, head counselor at the high school. And certainly will involve, uh, Matt Haney. Um, we're always looking at transitions. We want things to be smooth. And I, I don't want to, um, minimize this. It's, it's a big deal for any kid to, to leave, you know, their elementary setting or their middle-level setting and then come to the high school, so. And there's a lot of anxiety for, for parents too, so we want to make sure that we're doing the, the best we can to make sure it's a smooth transition for kids. I think the other thing that, that struck me too is the testimonials from the kids that are still on the island that are in high school. They can be great, great ambassadors to say, these are the things I struggled with when I went, and, you know, work out for that, and, and so I think, and, and certainly parent experiences, so weaving all that in, I think we can have a, um, a, a good overview and evaluate it each year. Thank you.
A quick question, if I may. This is Darlene.
Yes.
Okay, can you scroll down, um, Haley, to where it said bus transportation? I want to make certain I read it right. It went kind of fast. Uh, right there, it says, um, no ground transportation is provided after extracurricular, so, but that doesn't include this, just to clarify that, like in the past, it doesn't include the students that live on the island and commute every day, right? Because extracurricular for them, there's no bus transportation, transportation provided for them, correct? That falls on the parents.
Yeah, no, yeah, so if they do basketball or show choir or anything that's after school, there's no bus back to the dock.
We might want to clarify that in there, just, yeah, because when I read that, I'm like, oh, after extracurricular, so I would get excited. Yeah, so, yeah. You don't have to do it now, just when.
Yeah, I just want to make a note.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Haley, can you just make sure to send that out to us in an email or, or share it?
Yep, I shared it this morning, but also I can share it again to me.
Okay, oh, that's fine. All right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that from anybody for the high school tran- uh, transition? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to staffing update. I think we already talked about this, but, you know, Haley, is there anything else that we need to add? No? Okay. All right, so then I guess we can move on to the budget. So, we got the budget, an updated draft from Nancy in the email. Does everybody have a chance to look that over, hopefully? Yeah? Okay, so, um, the, Nancy, do you want to lead us through this, or how, how do we proceed from here? You guys want to just ask some questions?
I can just tell you what the differences are, if you want. Um, Haley had, um, contacted me, and we had to add actual students for high school under your tuition line. So, if you go under the regular instruction, down towards the bottom of that is, um, the tuition line that we had to adjust, and basically that was the only thing, I think, Haley, wasn't it, that we adjusted? Now, I did notice, because I've been working on a few of these at all at once here, and realized that your Blue Cross is still at 10. Um, the other board, the AOS board decided that we should adjust, um, downward to eight, but add the asymptomatic testing in there, but when I quickly did a, um, a shuffle of the funds, which I will do, um, afterwards, is it basically is a wash. There is not really any difference, and then there's also been a little extra tweak to the AOS, um, assessment that downwards, so it will, it will all come out in the wash, so basically what you have here as a total is the right total.
Okay.
Are there any parts of it that we, maybe, I know.
Nancy, can you speak to, um, Amy, if it's okay, I'd like Nancy to speak to the carry forward, because there's a couple of things here that we want to pay attention to. Um, you may see some elevated carry forward. Uh, we're seeing it in, in, uh, in our budgets, and I'd like Nancy to just talk about why that is and what, um, I think we want to make some recommendations to the board to navigate that, so we, we don't have a cliff. Nancy, can you talk a little bit about that?
Right. We did, when we did our, uh, preliminary, um, draft, we did save 40 grand, if you know, in the C in the note up above, right at the top of the sheet under revenues. Because of the COVID, uh, situation and last year's school not being in session for the full year and everything, we were able to save some money, basically, and that goes forward into this year, but we don't want to use all of it to go, um, to bring down the appropriation for the town, because in another year, you're gonna have additional costs that if you don't save some for later, then you're not that's been saved to help you with the taxes later on, and there are going to be a couple of items, like this year and next year, the second psychologist position at the AOS is funded by grants and donations, et cetera. So then we're gonna have to pick up that cost in that third year, basically, and that will be, um, 22, 22, 23. So we want to sure.
That's across the entire AOS.
Yes.
Yes.
And yours would be just a part of that, but, um, that's one of the things that's coming up. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we don't have a cliff. We don't want spikes in your, um, appropriation, trying to keep it, you know, as level as possible. Are there any questions from before that people thought of that in different parts of the budget I can answer, or Haley can?
Um, I mean, I think, I don't know, my thought is that the carry forward is, it, you know, it looks like it's, this, I understand saving like 40,000 of it for, you know, to help ride the spike over, but it seems like there's, there's more there that we could probably up the, the budget and carry forward a bit to kind of get closer to what we anticipate it's gonna be. a bit to kind of get closer to what we anticipate it's going to be. That was my thought about that. And then, then the new line, the negotiated agreements. I mean, is that for?
I can speak to that.
If you could let me know what that is, yeah.
So this is, we're in the final year of our, of our teacher contract. And just to remind folks, the Outer Islands, the Cranberries, Swans and Frenchboro, they, they typically follow the collective bargaining agreement. That's what they've done, at least since I've been here. And I believe prior to that, they're not bound to that, but that's historically what they've done. So we've put a placeholder in because we're in negotiations right now with the teachers. So that's, that number represents a placeholder and that would be whatever was decided upon by the board for any increases to salaries for principal, teachers, support staff. And so that number is all encompassing. And so once the board determines what that is, either through collective bargaining or at the local level, that those monies will be migrated out into those specific line items. We, it looks that way norm, every time we do a collective bargaining session, you normally don't see that negotiated agreement line in there, but that's what it is. It's monies that have been projected for salary benefit increases as determined by the board. The next question might be, Mark, what is that percent? And we don't reveal that because that's obviously something that is part of our negotiation process. And if the board has questions about that, we could hold an executive session and I can, I could update you. Nancy did speak to the insurance piece. And I would say that both Nancy and I can support 8%, although we typically don't do that because we're very conscious of the times we're in. But we would caution the board, we, we do not recommend going any lower than 8% at this time. Still with us, Amy? Yep.
Yeah, I just lost signal a little bit. Okay. So we basically, we were not part of the negotiations with teachers, but we follow what we, we follow what the negotiation, what they negotiate. The MDI.
You typically have, but you're not bound to it. Nancy, am I correct in that?
Actually, they're supposed to follow pretty much the same. I think the only exemption when they did the consolidation actually was Frenchboro because of more remoteness. I think that was the thing.
I think, yes, Amy, the, the interlocal agreement, and I can forward that on to the board, does specify alignment. So the, the short answer is yes. And, and again, just so folks know, that, that has historically not, at least in the five years I've been here, been an issue with the Cranberries.
No, it sounds good. I'm just, just trying to understand it all. Okay. So does anybody else have any questions for Nancy? Or anybody about the budget?
Amy, I will note that, as you know, we never have a preliminary printout even from the state yet. So this is Nancy's crystal ball here, you know, for the time being. And hopefully we're supposed to get a printout by February 1st, which of course is always too late for your town warrant. Cause I have to have that earlier to Denise. So we always end up changing on the floor of town meeting, the difference between the EPS article and the additional local article. But hopefully we will get some additional state subsidy. But I can't, I don't dare predict anything more than what I've put in there right now.
The commissioner said the target is January 31st. We'll, we'll see. But yeah, even if it is, then I think it's still the timeline that, that Nancy mentioned or, or went over.
So how do we determine that, that carry forward number? I mean, it seems like a very specific number.
The board ultimately determines that through the approval process in the budget. And then ultimately that is finally approved through the, the town meeting process. But you know, Amy, I guess what we could do is I could sit with Nancy, we could take a look at that. I think what you're trying to say is we want to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing so that we, we don't have a cliff. But if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're suggesting is, is to just to make sure we can minimize the, the burden on our, on, on the local taxpayers. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah. I mean, I'd like, I think it's coming, but it's going up a little bit. And it seems like there's quite a chin there on the carryover.
So let me take us, let me, let me sit down with Nancy, review the numbers again, bring it back. See if there's, you know, any final adjustments or recommended adjustments and, and we can go from there. Because that's something we're very conscious of in all of the budgets, all the 11 budgets we do across the AOS. Just the impact to, to local folks and, and how we can make sure we're conscious of that. I'll work with Nancy and Haley on that. And if there's anything that, that we can always convene a special meeting, but we could also email the board and do any, any recommended adjustments. Nancy, does that sound okay?
You do need to finalize a budget figure today. You know, basically because of timelines. So we could tweak the carryover and appropriation possibly. But I'm going to need to have those figures for articles for Denise very shortly.
Can I ask a question, Amy? Amy, can, can, oh, we lost Amy. Nancy, Amy, can I ask a question of Nancy on the carry forward? Nancy, is there, you know, just, is there a comfort zone that you have that we shave a little off and so that we can, we can move that forward to the board today? Or do we need some time to work on this?
If we, let me just, I've got a laptop here I'm playing with too, so.
I know. I hate to do this to you on the floor.
Nope, I got it open. I figured.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's a, it's, I, I don't want to delay the process either, but I hear what Amy's saying loud and clear. So we can make that adjustment.
If we did shave, like we were saving 40 grand. We only save 30,000 and hopefully come in lower on our anticipated expenditures, which would throw some more money towards the next year also by the end of the year. We don't know, you know, right now. That would bring an extra 10 grand, would bring your town appropriation down to 3.23%, which would be an $18,205 increase. So that extra 10 grand, if we didn't, if we only saved 30.
Are you comfortable with that, Nancy?
Basically 2%.
Are you comfortable with that, Nancy?
I think with their budget, I mean, obviously it would be better to have the 40. But I understand that, you know, where we had to add the money for the extra tuition. That would be something that we could work with.
And I think, and I think we could navigate that if, if I, I, I'm here. I think I'm comfortable with that. And I think if we were, if we weren't exactly dead on with it, I think that's something we could justify and look at people and say, look, this was, this was the, the thought process here to minimize the impact to the locals. Amy, would you be comfortable with the, with the 30,000 and then opening it up to the board? And does that help get us where you feel comfortable as the chair?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm all right with that.
So if, given that Nancy, if you could make that adjustment just to verify, and then maybe if the board has other questions on the budget. Because if I hear you correctly, Nancy, you're looking for a vote to come out of today's meeting, correct?
Yes, we need to vote on the total budget figure. What that part, I mean, it affect, it doesn't affect the total budget.
Right.
You know, but the other thing I think that in just as an explanation for Amy's question is when we do the anticipated expenditures and revenues, I go down through and actually it, it automatically generates that carry forward figure by formula in that spreadsheet. So it's not like a figure that I'm guessing at. I mean, in, in one way, we're, we are, we're estimating our expenditures and our revenue. But then that figure that we get, it was the amount that we saved out that we were adjusting a little bit. So it is a, it's a, it's an exercise that you go through to try to figure out what you are going to spend this year, basically. So that's, those are the, our best estimates at this point.
And I hate putting you on the spots, but spot Nancy, but I trust you and you're, you're never wrong. So if, if Nancy's comfortable with it, Amy and Carrie and Darlene, I will, I'm, I can get behind that 1,000%.
Okay. All right. So if we adjust the carryover, then that brings the town appropriation down by 1,000. So what are the numbers that we need to vote on? Is it the bottom or the?
The number that you need to vote on is actually it, it shows it on the, on the top as a total revenues. But at the very end of your budget, it's the same figure. The 814,204 would be your total budget for your 21, 22 fiscal year.
Okay. What about the rest of the board? Carrie, Darlene, do you, you guys comfortable with that, that number?
From what I can understand, I'm sorry, I'm not a numbers person, so I'm just being honest. That is not my strength. So I'm as comfortable as I can be with what I'm comprehending. So there you go.
Okay. Just for that, Darlene. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, really sporadic. All right. Carrie, okay with that number?
First and foremost, thank you Nancy and Haley for all the work that you guys put into this. I mean, I know, I know it's mostly Nancy, but Haley has a lot of input. And I just thank you guys because this is a lot. I, I think one of the things is, is that people think our numbers are negotiable. We can't negotiate, we can't look at someone and say, we're not going to pay you your salary. And raises happen every year. So I think that while this seems like a lot, we are trying to run a school and it doesn't matter how many kids we have in it because we actually have to hire people and that it doesn't. I, I just think that sometimes that's the argument that everyone throws at us. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we can't go down in numbers. We can't say we're not going to pay somebody their contract agreement. So I, I think the numbers look good. I mean, it is what it is. And I just, I thank you guys for putting all the time and energy into this because it's a lot. It's, it's overwhelming, but it's a lot. And it's a lot of work. Thank you. I have no problem making a motion. I mean, I'll bite the bullet and say that I make a motion that we approve the 2021 Crimberell School Department budget for 814,204.
2021, 22, right?
Oh, 2021, 22.
Yeah, believe me, I'm working in three different years.
So I have one question. I don't know if, if, if this affects the budget or not that we're discussing. Like I said, I'm a little confused, but assuming that, assuming that we are in the future going to go back to one school, would that decrease some of our staff cost and things like that to, and allow for some carryover the next year?
Let me answer that, Nancy. It affects it a little bit. We did budget to keep this two schools open. So we increased like some custodial salaries and things like that. It's not a huge number. It was a couple thousand dollars. So I don't think it'll make a huge difference, but it will come down a little bit.
Well, then we've got to increase the voting. I just thought of that. So it really, yeah.
So we budgeted to keep the schools both open and we budgeted to keep, have them combined. So yeah, that is why it did kind of boom, like, like get boosted a little bit. Cause we had to prepare for all scenarios. And then we do have a lot of secondary students on the islands right now. And that's why, you know, we had to account for if they made a choice, you know, to do boarding school or private school or whatever, MDI High School tuition, you know, we just didn't know. So we had to account for every secondary student. So yeah, some of those things might not end up being used as much as we put in there, but we have to have it in there just in case.
Right, that makes sense. And I apologize, I used the word open. I should have used the word enrolled. So anyway.
Okay, so right now we have a motion from Carrie on the floor for approving the budget for 814,204. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Darlene, Darlene seconded. Okay. All in favor of approval of the budget of fiscal year 21, 22?
Aye.
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 Aye. Passes.
Amy.
Thank you. And thank you, Nancy and Haley and Mark and everybody for your work on.
Amy, if I might, it might be good because this is a, a big piece. If you, I don't think you need to do a roll call, but if you could just acknowledge what that vote was, if it was unanimous, I think it'd be good for the record. So.
Okay, I did hear a unanimous approval of the, of the.
Thank you.
Heard a unanimous vote. All right. Ready to move on to other business? Does anybody else have, anybody have other business that we should discuss?
And this may already be some daily plans to address or Mark. I just want to clarify that the current plan for the Crimberell School is to remain remote just for the two weeks. Or is, do you have a date planned to reevaluate that, Mark, and then get back to us? Or just kind of what is the plan?
Sure. Amy, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Darlene. That's a question that everybody has. And the answer is we are assessing it each and every day. And our plan is to return to a hybrid in-person instruction after the, I want to get this date wrong. What's today? The 8th, 7th, after the 15th? So yes, right now, I can tell you that I have a meeting today with the Down East COVID-19 Task Force. That includes hospital representatives, lab representatives, chamber people, just a town managers, a whole host of people. And so we'll be looking at the information and specifically whether or not we have evidence of community spread or risk to the schools. Just to take you back through, I didn't. Just to take you back through, I didn't make this particular decision lightly, and it raised, I know, a lot of eyebrows. And folks were asking me, Mark, what's the metric? Sometimes people are looking for a specific number. I can tell you in this instance, the decision was made last Saturday because I received an unsolicited call from the hospital. The hospital called me. I did not call them and said, Mark, we're concerned. We're seeing, we're seeing increased symptoms. A number of people are coming in. They were doing testing. They didn't have the results back from the testing at the time. But there was a significant concern that had we gone back to school across the AOS, that in fact, we would have been bringing risk and exposure to our students and our staff. So I made that decision. Amy was part, I believe Amy was there. But I then assembled the admin team and the board chairs. And initially, we went in with a, I was going in with a recommendation of one week. But after consultation with all those groups, the decision was made to go the two weeks. So we're finishing the first week. But we fully intend to resume. And I will say that, you know, there's a couple of things too. And this is not to stigmatize anybody, but you know, here's an opportunity. What we do outside of school is really impacting whether or not we can keep our schools open. And what I mean by that is that prior to the holiday break, our kids and our staff and our communities, we were knocking it out of the park. We're doing it really well. And we were able to have our kids in school, at least at a minimum for hybrid in-person instruction. With what we're seeing across our region and community, that jeopardized that. And I am virtually certain, had we come back to school after the break, we would have been shutting down because of not having the ability to have staff in the building or students, either because of a positive case or close contacts. That was really the impetus. So I understand the strain that it places on kids, on parents, on staff. But I have no doubt it was absolutely and unequivocally the right thing to do. I don't take that lightly. And I don't want folks to forecast that that's gonna be something we're gonna be doing regularly because we fought hard to keep our schools open. But we need help. We need people out in the community when they're not in, when kids aren't in school, to be doing the things that we know keep us safe. That's wearing a mask, washing our hands frequently, avoiding group gatherings. And that is a significant piece that concerns me. Because when we're in school and we're doing all those things, because we're required to do them, but when we're out of school, what we do with our families around in our communities really impacts where we go, if it's a bank, if it's a business, if it's a school. All of those things factor into this. So we, we really, really can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate the community paying attention to that. And the last thing I'll say, Darlene, just in monitoring that, I am pleased that the results of our Sentinel testing that we're doing with employees came back yesterday. And we had no positive cases with that round. That's a good thing. That helps us move back to the place we want to be. But at any instance, on, at any day, that can shift. So I'm sorry for the long-winded answer, but it's really an opportunity to tell you, it's a moving target. And also, the sooner we can get a vaccine is gonna help us. But I can tell you that we're gonna be doing this for a long time. And what I mean by that is wearing masks and the protocols, I do not see going away anytime soon, even with a vaccine. It's going to take well into the fall, according to the medical experts, that we reach a point where, as a nation, we're out of the woods. And that's the projection from the scientists. So I'm gonna work really hard to continue to get information out there to families. We want kids back in school, but we need the community rallying behind us to make sure we can do that. Haley, do you have anything to add to that? Sorry, Darlene, that was way too long an answer, but you threw me, you threw me a softball and I needed to jump on that one. Thank you.
It was fine, it was fine. And I do have one more follow-up question to that. And that is, I know earlier in the fall, MDI was doing some remote and we were actually able to go in person. So is that a potential scenario? Okay.
Yes. And yes is the short answer because this was done at the, you know, again, I don't want to say, oh, the hospital. I think it was a prudent move, given what we were seeing for the data. But the answer to your question is yes. It doesn't have to be an all or nothing proposition. In this instance, we did that because we believed the data, it was the right thing to do. There's a possibility that, you know, we're gonna have schools that are open or closed. And depending upon the data and depending upon what happens in that community.
And I just will say, just for the, just for other people in the, in the public to know this, and I'm sure it's already out there, but I was, it's very hard to get that rapid testing at Walgreens. But our town now has that if you're showing symptoms, you gotta be showing symptoms. So anyway. So for the school board, I was really impressed. I've been extremely impressed with our town. And Caitlin Damon, who's overseeing that, and I just want to give a shout out to them.
Absolutely. And we appreciate people, if there's any doubt, stay home. We'll work with you. We'll work with the families, we'll work with the kids. When in doubt, give it a pause. And we'll, we'll, we'll work with you on that. Amy, I saw Carrie's hand.
Okay, Carrie?
I just want to say, Mark, that that was really well put about the whole that, you know, the community really needs to step up. And if we want to keep our schools safe, we have to keep our communities safe. It's just a really, the way you said it really hits home for what it is. We can't, we can't keep the school safe if we're not having the actions in our own personal life.
Yeah, and to that point, Carrie, you know, I mean, I've said it many, many times. Accountability begins and ends at the schoolhouse door. We can't mandate what people do in their personal lives and outside of school. But it does impact what we do in school. So, you know, we're charged with kids from 8:00 to 3:00, they're in our care. But we can't control what happens from 3:00 PM to 8:00 AM, thereabouts. But it does impact what we do or do not do.
Thank you, Mark, for letting us know.
I have one other thing, and I'm gonna work with you and Nancy, but I just, I'm just thinking about town meeting coming up. And, you know, we're still in the middle of the pandemic. So we want to be, we want to be collaborative, work with the town in terms of how we're gonna pull that off. So whether it's, you know, whether it's Jim or Denise or, you know, through the select board, how we're gonna navigate that to make sure that we can pull that off and work with the town in terms of locations and logistics. I just want folks to know that's on our mind for Cranberry, which is typically one that kicks us off, but in all of our communities. So I'm sure we'll have more information here soon.
So the town meeting is not gonna be held at the school. And I, as I understand, I got, you had emailed Jim about that, or he had asked you or something.
It's, it's, it's not recommended at this time, but, you know, nothing's gonna be off the table in terms of how we can safely move forward. You know, we learn more and more every day. I guess our preference is to find a location other than the school, if at all possible. I know in the past, we've been able to do that. If we can do that through this period, that would be great. But we're gonna be collaborative and we'll work with the town on this piece.
Anybody else have their business? I'm not hearing any. I'm good. We don't have any other public comment.
Not that I'm aware of.
Moving on to future agenda items. Any suggestions for future agenda items?
I think, you know, this, this follow-up items on things we've been talking about, Amy, that I know we'll be able to provide regular updates to the board. And again, I just want to make sure that the board and the public knows, you don't have to wait for these meetings to, if you have a question, please reach out to us. Certainly Haley and Nancy and I are available to answer any questions. You know, not trying to discourage people doing it in public, but if they, if they have a question, they don't need to wait. We're happy to help in any way we can.
Okay, so if you have any other ideas for agenda items, we'll send them to Mark, Haley by email or whatever. Okay, date and time for the next meeting?
February 5th is projected.
Yeah, that's the first Friday in February. And 8:30, I mean, seemed to be kind of tough for people today. With, with parents having Zoom, their kids zooming in at 8:30 and.
Is 9 o'clock better for you folks, Amy?
I think 9 would be fine. I mean, what, Carrie and Darlene, what, you guys think 9 would be better?
Yes, 9 would be good. Yeah. We, we're gonna still, and I'm sure Carrie will too, because she has more than one student. So we'll probably still have school going on, but at least it doesn't start at the same time.
Right, right. That's understandable. We all have lives. So, all right. And on February 5th, unless anybody has a conflict that day.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for your support. You guys are awesome. Really appreciate everything you do for our kids, for our schools, and your support's incredible. I hope everybody's healthy and safe. Take care.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Bye, Wyatt. Be a good boy.
Thank you, everyone.
Did we adjourn? I couldn't hear. It was cutting in and out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had our motion and everything. All right, great. See you, guys.